Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's August the eighteenth, and this is the Dayton City Council meeting for August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Will the press please call or roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanam?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Dow?
Here.
All seven members of City Council are in attendance, therefore a quorum does exist, and this evening we'll have the pledge of allegiance be led by Mr. Murphy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dishes to the agenda, I have one addition, like to make a proclamation on four A. Mrs. Westfall, any additions to the agenda?
Nothing, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Members of council, additions? You don't want to sit the committee?
I think we do that on the next meeting.
Okay. Good enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shaw?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schreier?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Branning?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much. Moving on to the council meeting minutes from July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with approval of the Sylvan City Council meeting minutes from the meeting held July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five as submitted.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the council meeting minutes for July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five as submitted, all those in favor.
Aye.
Chief Miller saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item four A, we have a proclamation which we walked on because we didn't want, we wanted to surprise somebody, so Chief Miller now would you come forward? So for those of you who don't know, I think pretty much everybody knows Chuck's last days at the end of this month, and he has been with the city of Sylvan for forty. He is the longest-serving employee in the city of Sylvan at this point, and the second-longest-serving employee in the city of Sylvan, and also in the council chambers this evening, right, Chief?
Correct.
As you mentioned to me, so.
Take it over.
Yeah, absolutely. With that being said, whereas Chuck began his career with the city of Sylvan in nineteen-eighty-five as a part-time telecommunicator for the Sylvan Police Division, and whereas on March fifth, nineteen ninety, he was promoted to a full-time telecommunicator, excuse me for me, for my sake, during which time he helped develop and operate the police department's first forensic computer, and whereas Chuck decided to change career paths by entering the world of information technology and was promoted to IT specialist for the city on April twenty-fifth, two thousand six, and whereas he excelled in this position by leading the department and successfully protecting all city data, assisted in developing the city's first website, continuously upgrading software systems to keep the city running efficiently, among many other important projects that kept the city's technology up to date, giving the city administration every reason to promote Chuck to IT manager on June second, two thousand fourteen, whereas Chuck is very deserving of his retirement after serving his community for an incredible forty years. Now therefore I, Mark Frye, Mayor, do proclaim August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five as Charles Silvernail Day in the city of Sylvan. Thank you very much and congratulations.
That's a lot of people to keep a secret.
They kept it, I only kept the secret up here. Any comments, any parting shots, any last words?
You know, when I first started here, Chief Saab, in my acceptance letter, said that your career is what you make of it here, and that has been so true. I have been supported here by so many coworkers over the years, and City Council, and Mayor, and I'm still amazed at what I was able to accomplish with your support, and with the mayor, and the previous mayor, and all the people that have surrounded me throughout these forty years, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you. Now since this is Dad and Granddad's, I'm not sure who's who yet, and the current mayor said this in fact, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Chuck does.
Yeah. Chuck has to say yeah. Moving on to the Employee and Community Relations Committee meeting for Proposed Ordinance eighty-two, two thousand twenty-five, just a quick report. Mr. McCann, well, a semi-quick report.
I was going to qualify that.
Never mind.
This evening, eight eighteen twenty-five, we started the meeting at six eighteen P.M. of the Employee and Community Relations Committee on the Proposed Ordinance of eighty-two-dash-twenty twenty-five Employee Handbook, in attendance were myself, Marcus Hanson, Doug Hanam, Ed Richardson, committee, also with us present Sean Murphy, Mary Westfall, Leslie Branning, Mayor Frye, Toby Schreier, Danelyn Miller, Joe Shaw, Bill Sanford, and audience members. The mayor made a comment that this is most significant change because we did not add an employee handbook before, so this is a new step for us, and also the most significant change within that handbook for what policies we have now is parental leave. Mr. Hanson, we had, discussion ensued, and some of the things that were brought to attention was probationary period moving from twelve to fifteen months, and this would be for, this is related to both administration and safety with contract with the city. I'm not sure if that would affect that, I didn't ask that question. Okay, so this would be strictly for city-specific, non-union, safety employees. Also, pay, we, was stated it's on a bi-weekly, again, these are in the policies, or in writing, what the policies are that paid.
Bi-weekly.
Possible code of conduct policy for all employees, boards and committees, this can be, that, those discussions will be handled separately or in potential separate meetings with the law director to discuss. Made sure that the law director has specific edits, we had two different versions we were looking at this evening, and what came out of this is that the law director will make the recommended changes to the committee, we can decide whether to move forward with the audience or to continue discussion by scheduling a follow-up meeting. The meeting was adjourned at seven oh two, Patrick moved, Marcus seconded, and that's my report, Mr. Mayor. Any discussion or comments?
Thank you, Mr. McCann, appreciate the report, look forward to continuing the process forward, and next we have a report on the public hearing for the door hours of operation modification. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we did have a public hearing this evening, it began at seven oh two P.M., all members of council were present, leadership team members were present, the mayor was present, we did have some people here in the audience as well. The subject was change in the door hours of operation, there had been a request from Redbird to change the door hours from twelve P.M. to twelve A.M. Monday through Sunday to ten A.M. to twelve A.M. Monday through Sunday, and they had done the formal application to amend the hours, so we invited Mrs. Fields to step up and share her thoughts about Redbird's request for this change, and she did indicate that there is, it would be very helpful to the staff and make sure that they are not worrying about if it's twelve noon, that they could begin to serve when these organizations and the restaurants open, and also there are not very many times that they have people who are interested in having a beverage before noon, but that it would just be a special occasion, and she felt it would be helpful. So we invited people from the audience, no one spoke, either for ordinance to change, we did invite council members to speak, and generally they were supportive as well, as was the mayor, and we invited the police chief to let us know if there'd been any concern to the door, if there were any increased, you know, alcohol abuse or any other issues, and she did not feel that they'd seen any problems with the door. So with that, Mr. Hanam moved, and Mr. Hanson seconded that legislation be prepared to adjust the door hours to ten A.M. to twelve A.M. Monday through Sunday, that motion did pass, and with that, the meeting was adjourned.
Thank you, Mrs. Westfall. So at the next council meeting, correct, we'll have good consideration of the expansion of door hours on the, on the agenda for your consideration, council. Thank you very much. Moving on to the various streets projects, Mr. Shaw, item, agenda item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to all members of council. In front of you are three action items that we're requesting on our Erie Street and Monroe Street Roundabout Project, that also includes the resurfacing of Erie Street from Centennial all the way to Monroe. Our right-of-way plan development process is nearly concluded, we are ready to start the appraisal process, and the appraisal review process, which for those that don't know, when you publicly acquire right-of-way projects that use federal funds, not necessarily in the right-of-way phase, but in any phase of, whether it's construction or design, you have to follow very specific procedures on how you acquire that real estate. So ODOT requires us to use pre-qualified consultants to do that for two aspects of work. One of it is for basically doing everything, and then one of the pieces of it is doing a specific piece of it again, so basically, West Erie Realty Solutions basically does everything for us, which is project management, title reports, appraisals, negotiations, closings, documents, recordings, they take us from the start to the finish line, but we're required to do one of those processes a second time, which is the actual review of the appraisal, and so we have to have an independent person not hired through our engineering consultant to do that independent review of the appraisal work, and that's what appraisal acquisition consultants will do, is they'll take a very specific look at the appraisal, make comments on it, do they agree with it, do they disagree with it, I think you did this wrong, I think you need to look at this more, and then when all of that is completed, you have your fair-market value estimate for what you can then offer a property owner for the real estate. So those are the two things that are in this, and B and C of yours, both of them have independent ordinances for their proposals, so West Erie Realty's cost to do ten parcels is ninety-five thousand dollars, and then to do the appraisal review on those appraisal acquisition consultants is proposing thirteen thousand five hundred, so be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for members of council?
Mr. McCann? This is, the appraisal acquisition consultants would review the process of the actual appraisal, they are not a local company that would actually perform a separate appraisal of said property.
Right, their scope of work is to specifically look at the work done by the appraiser, so when you go make a fair-market value offer, the appraiser is the one that you're actually doing with, the appraisal reviewer looks at holes, pokes holes. These were, you made some assumptions, maybe you incorrectly looked at a specific value in a, in a book, that's what they're supposed to do, is kind of review that to make sure you have a complete appraisal package before it gets offered.
Versus having a second company come in and do an appraisal?
Yeah, you don't, you don't redo them twice, you basically just review the appraisal process, that's how ODOT projects work.
Mrs. Westfall.
Mr. Shaw, I'm sorry if I'm asking you to repeat yourself, but I have missed it. Have we worked with West Erie Realty Solutions and/or appraisal acquisition consultants?
We have, West Erie Realty has helped us in my twelve years with all ODOT-funded projects where we've had to acquire right-of-way, they've helped us with that. Appraisal acquisition consultants is the same person who's going to do it, he's operating under a different LLC name at this time, but we have used him before.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Shaw?
This might just be to help me understand, because I'm used to us having multiple proposals or multiple bids, but I did notice the letter that came from our ODOT liaison officer where they were recommending negotiating lower prices, is that because they're on a pre-qualified list, that makes it so we don't have to go out?
So when we do our letter of interest, what we do when we specify our letter of interest process to do consultants for the whole thing, we actually include West Erie Realty in those scope of services for us, but we don't ask them to do any fee quoting at that time, because you don't know if you've got five parcels or you've got twenty to do, so we reserve that, they've always been a part of the team, but then we wait until this point in time when we know actually what our right-of-way plans are telling us, we need to go get ten parcels and do that. Appraisal acquisition consultants is completely separate. Appraisal review people are pre-qualified with ODOT, there's not many of them, especially locally, we might have four or five, we have a pretty good relationship with this individual who's helped us on tax projects, and that's why we reached out to him.
A follow-up question, why are we doing this?
Why are we getting consultants to help us with the right-of-way process?
Yes.
We have to, we are not qualified to acquire real estate using federal funds, it has to be ODOT pre-qualified consultants.
Then, I know, is this a checks and balance, or is this part of the contract?
These will be independent contracts with these people.
No, I understand that, but it's the process thing, because we get three appraisals, just like we get three quotes, is continuing, Ms. Dowes.
Right, so when, let's maybe take a step back, so when we did the letter of interest process for this, we hired Tetra Tech to help us with this, Tetra Tech had DGL consulting engineers to survey, we had CT consultants do geotechnical, there was a package that was submitted with that letter of interest process, West Erie Realty was a part of that process, we just did not ask them for their fee at that time, they've always been a part of this process, so when we accepted them, they were there.
But again, I'm just looking at it from a checks and balances perspective, is that why it's required? Is it checks and balance, not, I'm not talking financial at all?
Yeah, so when you, when you do your letter of interest process, it's not fee-based at all, so everybody submits their qualifications based on who you are and what your team is, and we select that team based on their qualifications, and then we go into scope and fee negotiations with them.
Understood, but again, why would we involve this separate company to check?
We have to.
And it's part of the contract.
It's non-negotiable when you do ODOT projects, you have to have an appraisal.
Part of the contract, okay.
Hundred percent. I'm sorry if I misunderstood that.
And Mr. Shaw, because it's an ODOT-driven process, could you name a couple of other projects in the city over the last few years that that's been the case?
We've done it at Monroe and Haroon, we've acquired our right-of-way at Flower Hospital in Haroon for the new traffic signal, we've acquired right-of-way on Monroe and Silicas Project.
Just don't recall that within the specific.
Yeah, we've done this, what you're seeing in front of you has been done on every single one of those projects.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Shaw? Does, does the state also have a follow-up appraisal check?
They will, District Two will review them, they'll also provide some limited feedback on that, but because this is...
So West Erie will do it, these guys will come in and double-check West Erie, and the state will come?
Yeah, the state is involved with right-of-way acquisition at every step in the way, so they'll see the appraisals, of course, if they have some comments on them, they'll advise too, but it's local let, so we really can drive the boat on it, but District Two's responsibility is to make sure all the federal requirements are being met.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Hearing that, we have words eighty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, consideration for this hearing.
Is it eighty-six, or is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just want to make sure I'm doing this in the right order.
Hold on, I got stuff connected, my apologies, eighty-six, two thousand twenty-five.
Making sure I was looking at the right one. This is ordinance number eighty-six, two thousand twenty-five, I'll read by title only, accepting the proposal of W.E. Realty Solutions Limited to provide right-of-way acquisition services relative to the Erie and Monroe Roundabout Project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance eighty-six, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, and ordinance eighty-six, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure, moving on to ordinance now, ordinance number eighty-seven, two thousand twenty-five.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number eighty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, I'll read by title only, accepting the proposal of appraisal acquisition consultants LLC to provide appraisal review services relative to the Erie and Monroe Roundabout Project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred dollars, and I will move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Just clarifying, is that the correct dollar amount?
Pardon?
Yeah, I have a question, what's the dollar amount?
The...
Did I read the old one?
Yeah.
I apologize.
It's okay, the revised one is thirteen, oh, right. The correct amount is thirteen five.
Crisis, life will be good.
So, Ms. Branning, we're okay on the motion?
Yes, the night, the ordinance number is the same, we've clarified the correct dollar amount, we're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, I apologize.
No, no worries.
I was looking at the old, the old one.
We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, moving on to agenda item number seven D, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and our last piece of funding to secure for this project is eligible with this round of, our Ohio Public Works Commission pot of monies, we have worked in the past couple of weeks to come up with a dollar amount for the OPWCS that we think can score well in the program, that amount is seven hundred thousand dollars to help us supplement the two point eight six one million dollars that we've secured for the state, to help us resurface as well as build this roundabout, so this is our last piece of funding that we will look to secure, we will submit the project September fifth, I'm a part of the scoring and ranking committee that goes on with Ohio Public Works Commission, so I will know probably in November how our application did, but the request tonight is to get our last piece of funding for seven hundred thousand dollars from OPWC, be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from members of council? Hearing that, we have resolution thirteen, two thousand twenty-five for consideration, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is resolution number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, I'll read by title only, a resolution authorizing the mayor and director of finance to file a grant application with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Erie Street and Monroe Street Roundabout, and Erie Street resurfacing project, and I'll make a motion for passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve resolution thirteen, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, moving on to agenda item number eight, downtown transportation improvement for the burial of utility lines, Mr. Shaw.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, we're starting to get a lot of movement in our utility burial process, we had maybe a meeting or so ago, we had the authorization to advertise for construction for that, before we officially put that on the street, we want to make sure that we've got all of our needs for our utilities buttoned up before we move to construction, so when I say that, we have four entities that we're working with, Charter Spectrum, Frontier Communications, Toledo Edison, and Buckeye Cable, each one has their own specific legal departments, and each one of them has their own specific needs when it comes to asking them to go below grade and what their expectations of us are, so we are diligently working with all four, in front of you tonight are two that we're ready to finalize with them as we move towards construction, our first one is with Buckeye Cable Vision, they have asked us to put together what they call a statement of conduit access rights, along with their estimate that's included, so the estimate kind of speaks for itself, ninety-nine thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents, so we would be asking to appropriate those funds for them to physically locate their facilities below grade, so just as a reminder, the city is putting all the infrastructure below grade, and then once that infrastructure is below grade, each utility can come down from the pole, put their facilities in the stuff that we've provided them, and then move forward with the project. Buckeye Cable is very specific on the terms of what they want, they want to have their own handholds, they want to have their own conduit, they want to have any vaults, anything that's theirs, they want it to be theirs moving forward, which of course makes sense, none of us want to be in the telecommunications business, but they want a specific statement of those rights, and that's kind of what's in front of you tonight, so what we're going to be putting in, a portion of what we're going to be putting in is dedicated specifically to Buckeye, and that's the statement of conduit access rights they provided us, so I'll pause there before we move on to the next one and see if you have any questions.
Ms. Dowes.
I think I already know the answer to this, but I want to ask it just to be sure, so Buckeye Cable is a for-profit company, and they have their infrastructure that they need to use to provide their good, they already have it available on the public lines, but we have to make up the price difference for it to go underground, for them to be able to make a profit on, and can you explain part of the why of it?
So you can ask a utility company to go above grade and move out of your right-of-way into new right-of-way that you buy, that comes at their expense, that's really specific language that's in the revised code on how that works, if you ask them to go from above ground to below ground, they don't have to do that, that's your additional request of them, they can charge you those funds to do that, and that's what each one of them are doing, they, we're asking them to move... We have a motion and a second to approve resolution thirteen, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number eight, downtown transportation improvement for the burial of utility lines. Mr. Shaw?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're starting to get a lot of movement in our utility burial process. We had maybe a meeting or so ago, we had the authorization to advertise for construction for that before we officially put that on the street. We want to make sure that we've got all of our needs for our utilities buttoned up before we move to construction. So when I say that, we have four entities that we're working with, Charter Spectrum, Frontier Communications, Toledo Edison, and Buckeye Cable. Each one has their own specific legal departments, and each one of them has their own specific needs when it comes to asking them to go below grade and what their expectations of us are. So we are diligently working with all four. In front of you tonight are two that we're ready to finalize with them as we move towards construction. Our first one is with Buckeye Cable Vision. They have asked us to put together what they call a statement of conduit access rights along with their estimate that's included. So the estimate kind of speaks for itself. Ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents. So we would be asking to appropriate those funds for them to physically locate their facilities below grade. So just as a reminder, the city is putting all the infrastructure below grade, and then once that infrastructure is below grade, each utility can come down from the pole, put their facilities in the stuff that we've provided them, and then move forward with the project. Buckeye Cable is very specific on the terms of what they want. They want to have their own handholds. They want to have their own conduit. They want to have any vaults, anything that's theirs. They want it to be theirs moving forward, which of course makes sense. None of us want to be in the telecommunications business. But they want a specific statement of those rights, and that's kind of what's in front of you tonight. So what we're going to be putting in, a portion of what we're going to be putting in is dedicated specifically to Buckeye, and that's the statement of conduit access rights they've provided us. So I'll pause there before we move on to the next one and see if you have any questions.
Ms. Dowes?
I think I already know the answer to this, but I want to ask it just to be sure. So Buckeye Cable is a for-profit company, and they have their infrastructure that they need to use to provide their good. They already have it available on the public lines, but we have to make up the price difference for it to go underground, for them to be able to make a profit on, and is, can you explain part of the why of?
So you can ask a utility company to go above grade and move out of your right-of-way into new right-of-way that you buy. That comes at their expense. That's really specific language that's in the revised code on how that works. If you ask them to go from above ground to below ground, they don't have to do that. That's your additional request of them. They can charge you those funds to do that. And that's what each one of them are doing. They, we're asking them to move. We're not asking them to move above ground and, and just to the left or right. You're asking them to go below, and they don't have to do that. That comes at your dime. And that's what this is.
And to clarify that, that's what we have to on Ohio law, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then what, I know Buckeye's not going to come in and just yank the stuff up and tear up the dirt necessarily, but what rights do they have to that whole area because they have ownership of that space?
Yeah, I mean, it's their, it's just like, we already kind of have one of these in town. You may not know about it, but Frontier Communications has a major duct bank in town. They're already below grade. So if I have to ask them to move because of utility conflict, they can do that at, at their expense. There's a lot of negotiation that goes with that, but for the most part it does. But just the physical going from above to below is where the expense comes from. But they, they will own the conduit. So we'll put two four inches on the west side of Main Street forum with a couple of boxes. Once their facilities are below grade and the system's operational and everybody's got services, that becomes theirs.
But they have rights to come in, for simplicity's sake, this way and this way.
Absolutely.
But they don't have the right to come in and tear up the surface?
We will be putting in a lot of that stuff. There's, there's a possibility they may have to spot dig or do something.
I just mean in the future, if we did all this beautiful landscaping and put in sidewalks and did whatever else we're going to do, they couldn't just come in willy-nilly because they said that we owned this and tear that up without?
They could, for sure. They can, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they can. Yeah, it's just a utility. Let's say there's a fault line and they got to dig it up. For sure, they have the ability to service that. There's no doubt.
For servicing issues.
And actually, in your rear yards, if you're west of here, more in newer subdivisions, Frontier's already below grade, Buckeye's already below grade. If there's something they got to repair, guess what? They're going to dig in the yard. So that's very, they can.
We've made some of those calls in the last seven months with Mayor Lee. And I'm sure Mayor Stowe did before.
And what's, what's considered reasonable and unreasonable? I mean, they don't have the time to be unreasonable. Typically, I would imagine they got a business to run, but what's considered reasonable and unreasonable as far as tearing people's yards up or downtowns that we spend dollars of dollar remodeling?
What you usually will see with these guys is the, the physical moving from point A to point B underground. There's very few things that can happen with that. You may need to pull wire one way or the other. But once it comes up above ground, there's a, there's a trans closure where all of those connections are. So if somebody needs something new, a lot of that stuff is happening above grade in that, in that box, so to speak. But it's not to say they couldn't dig, because they certainly could.
And again, to clarify, this is, they will have conduit. So this, this is not an underground rung. This is a underground rung.
The fine path.
A path.
Mr. Shaw?
Yep.
I know we haven't gotten to Frontier yet, but I have a question that kind of combines both of those. So Buckeye will have their own conduit. Frontier then uses a four-inch PVC. Physically, they'll probably run side by side, I would assume?
They're very close to each other.
We'll put them in probably in the same trench when we do it.
So then does the, the access, above-ground access, let's say, that Buckeye wants to own, is there a conflict now because of access?
It's not real estate we're talking about. Remember, it's just, it's just facility. So we're talking about conduit. So if there's, you know, a Buckeye one that's here and a Frontier, Frontier one that's here, it's the facility of the conduit. And if they need to access it by digging, they certainly can do that.
It will, it'll be separate access.
It will be separate access. Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Other questions from members of council?
And would they all get put out of business by satellites there?
Sure.
Maybe.
Oh, it's coming, baby.
Ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number eighty-eight dash twenty-two-five, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a statement of conduit access and rights with Buckeye Cable Vision, Inc., relative to a downtown transportation improvement project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents. I move for passage of ordinance number eighty-eight dash twenty-two-five as an emergency measure.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number eighty-eight, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. And ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item C. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I gave you a preview. This one is for Frontier Communications on the same project. I should have mentioned it in the Buckeye one, but I'll go ahead and mention it here. These, these amounts that you're looking at are budgeted in our two thousand twenty-five capital improvement project. So these numbers, they look, you know, a little, you know, I would say they're not minuscule. They certainly are, are some amounts to deal with. But we had gone through this process a year ago and gotten some preliminary estimates on what we thought this was going to cost. So these are all programmed, you know, into our twenty twenty-five capital improvement budget. But Frontier, specific to them, they asked us to approve their letter of intent, which basically is the relocation of their aerial fiber optic and copper facilities and place them underground within two four-inch conduits provided by the city. Any other Frontier-owned poles, you may not know, utility poles have different ownerships. Toledo Edison can own some, Frontier can own some, Buckeye doesn't usually get into the pole. ... business, but there are some around town that they do own. So then, once their facilities are fully below grade, Frontier is responsible for taking the old poles that they own out. Toledo Edison will do the same. Obviously, that's the whole point of the effort is to beautify it. They'll pull their poles too. But Frontier has some poles that they will be removing when they've been relocated to. So the letter of intent, that's the scope of work. Their cost is seventy thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents to do that. The request tonight would be to approve those funds. Most likely, those will come in the form of an invoice. Both Buckeye and Frontier will invoice us when appropriate for that work. And that's pretty much it on that one. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions from members of council?
I should have asked this on the, on the Buckeye one too, but they're invoicing us this for, but how do we know that this is the real value of what it costs to do that? I mean, how, what do we measure that against? That seventy thousand dollars is the?
Let me go to...
And do they bid that out for the work?
I'm not privy to that. I'm not sure if they hire their own outside contracting consultants or, or, these are their estimates. Just like I would come to you guys with an estimate of construction cost and we publicly bid the project. My, my assumption is this is their. If they're, if there's a change or something big happens, I probably will be coming back and saying they need an additional ten thousand or whatever it could be. But, you know, let's hopefully that's not the case. Hopefully, these estimates are conservative on their end. Did I answer your question?
It does.
Yeah, kind of.
Other questions? Hearing on, we have ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number eighty-nine dash twenty-two-five, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a letter of intent with Frontier Communications, relative to the downtown transportation improvement project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of seventy thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. I move for passage of ordinance number eighty-nine dash twenty-two-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number eighty-nine, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number nine. So Chief, you want this, or Ms. Brannan, do you want this?
The chief.
Chief?
I believe we spoke with you a while ago about the court having problems with security officers. We decided to step in and provide two officers over there to help with security. So we've been working with them over the last year, trying to come to an agreement in terms on how things are going to work. And we were able diligently to sit down and hammer things out. And basically, what we have is a request for allowing the director of finance and the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding as to how this is going to work. So, any questions?
So Chief, just to be clear, we're already paying for security as the city anyways. What we're talking about is converting what is the security that we provide or we pay for now as the city and hiring police, sworn officers to do that work, correct?
Correct. Right now, the city is paying a higher rate to hire off-duty Lucas County Sheriff's officers through a temp agency. And we're proposing to hire just full-time officers, which would be at our regular straight rate. And then those officers would only eighty percent of the time, we're projecting to be over in the service of the court. And when they're not, they'll be back at the police department assisting us.
So will they have two people that they report to, to, or just to you? Who, who do they report to?
They're going to report to me.
Okay.
They'll, they'll still be employees of the police department. They'll still work with us. This is no different than what we do with the school system and have been doing with the school system for probably twenty, twenty-five years. Just like that, we work with the schools. The chief works with the superintendent, the principals and everything to come to an understanding. And the same setup is set with the judge, is even though they're assigned over there, the judge, the court administrator, myself, and the officers sit down and come up with.
Did the chief oversee the security people before? I mean, did you? Or did the judge? Who oversees the other group?
Years, many years ago, prior to...
No, right now.
Right now, the judge oversees them, or the court administrator, one of the two will oversee them. We have in the past, during my career, had another court officer over there at one time. And I believe that ended in two thousand and ten, or shortly thereafter, somewhere in the early two thousand.
Other questions from members of council? Chief, these positions, are they assigned, or are these positions that are, that are bid on?
They're assigned. They can apply for them, and then they interviewed, and we picked two officers.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Richardson?
I'd like to push back from the table to a potential conflict of interest. If that's, if that's okay?
Absolutely. We'll handle that in just a second.
Before we, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Any other questions for, for members of council regarding this?
I just said, what you mentioned is, it was, you're paying a higher rate with the temp agency. Do you have a rough guess of if there's, what kind of financial savings or is it probably a wash?
I'm not sure. I, I know it's...
It's not more, is what you're saying.
No, it, we should actually...
It will end up being more. It will come out of the court budget.
Other questions? Hearing on, Mr. Richardson's request, he's requesting, because of a potential conflict of interest, to push back from the table regarding ordinance ninety, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion to allow him to push back?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to allow Mr. Richardson to push back from the table regarding ordinance ninety, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Let the record show that Mr. Richardson has pushed back from the table regarding ordinance ninety, two thousand twenty-five. Any other questions before we move on? And then we have ordinance ninety, two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mrs. Westfall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number ninety dash two thousand twenty-five. All members of council have received copies in advance. I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance of the city of Sylvania, Ohio, enter into a court security officer agreement with the Sylvania Municipal Court. I move passage of ordinance number ninety dash two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number ninety, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Let the, let the record reflect that Mr. Richardson has now rejoined the table. Ordinance number ninety-one, two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Ms. Brannan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an issue that is really, doesn't come up very often, but we have a, in our code currently, there's a maximum depth-to-width ratio that we're, that lots are allowed to be split to be created. And there's an issue that would create an L-shaped lot, which doesn't seem like best planning. But in order to comply with the depth-to-width ratio, it would have to be that way. So what we're asking is that the codified ordinance section be amended to permit an X, to not have a maximum depth-to-width ratio, that it can just be a general rectangular shape. So, but because this is all, an amendment to the Planning and Zoning Code, it has to be referred to the Plan Commission for their review and recommendation. So it's just the first step in the process. But if anybody has any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer them. It's, we have a specific request from a certain, from a specific property owner. And when the deputy service director was doing the calculations, he's like, Leslie, this doesn't make, why do we have to create an L-shaped, an irregular-shaped lot? So that's what this is attempting to...
No, I'm confused. Will it be an L-shaped lot?
No.
It will not?
It would, the way that, correct. We're trying to correct that with this legislation.
If we don't change it, it will be an L-shaped lot.
Okay.
So are we referring the amendment to eleven seventy-nine point oh five to the Planning Commission?
Correct. I'm sorry?
We're referring this to the Planning Commission?
Correct, yes.
Are we referring the ordinance or just the amendment to section eleven seventy-nine point oh five?
The ordinance with the proposed amendment to eleven seventy-nine oh five.
That it? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Other questions?
Because I got to do it.
Yes.
And as such, Mr. Han, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to refer ordinance number ninety-one dash twenty-seventy-five, proposing an amendment to chapter eleven seventy-nine point oh five of the municipal code, to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation.
Okay.
Motion and a second to move the ordinance ninety-one, two thousand twenty-five regarding the modification of election, of section eleven seventy-nine of the codified ordinances to the, to the zoning, or for the Planning Commission for consideration. All those of...
No, to the planning or the zoning?
Planning Commission for consideration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number eleven. Ordinance number ninety-two, two thousand twenty-five, modification of the codified ordinances regarding leaves of absence. Ms. Brannan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, Mr. Schreier discussed in the previous Employee and Community Relations Committee meeting held this evening. We currently give credit for time that you've been an employee for another state agency or subdivision, but we don't include military time in that. And we've had a mid-career military, former military employee that would be a significant increase in his vacation time. So we think it's the right thing to do. So we brought it to you, to you for consideration, and we recommend it's approved.
Any questions for Ms. Brannan regarding this?
What is the significant increase?
Yep.
The significant increase in vacation time?
Yep.
Well, currently, if you start as a new employee here, it doesn't matter how old you are, how many years of... It's one week of vacation for the first year. So anything over that, I would guess.
It added, it added one week a year to my vacation. And it does not affect seniority.
Correct.
Anything. It just affects vacation.
How we calculate vacation.
It gave this particular employee one extra week a year.
Mrs. Westfall?
Answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Richardson?
I might want to push back as well on this one.
Yes.
Fair enough, to be safe.
Yeah.
No, no, that's better safe.
Sorry.
That's not who we were talking about. Yes, for the record, it's not. Yes, yes.
This is just for non-union though, correct?
Oh, yes, that's right.
Oh. Doesn't affect the police contract. Then, what's your recommendation?
I think you're fine, Patrick.
Any other questions? Hearing on, we have ordinance ninety-two, two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. McCann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number ninety-two dash twenty-two-five, revising the administrative, departmental, and divisional organization of the city and the coded, codified ordinances thereof, by amending Sylvania Codified Ordinance, Chapter one thirty-nine, Position and Compensation Plan, by amending Section one thirty-eight dot oh seven, leaves is that, leaves of absence. I move passage of ordinance number ninety-two dash twenty-two-five as an emergency measure. I move passage of ordinance number ninety-two dash twenty-twenty-five as an emergency measure.
We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number ninety-two-two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. An ordinance number ninety-two-two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number twelve, denounce certificates. Mr. Schreier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are the monthly denounce certificates that we bring to council for approval. And purchase may over three thousand dollars, and qualified under the denounce procedures. And this is for the month of July, with the last one there being August first, that the administration asks for your approval.
Any questions for Mr. Schreier regarding the denounce certificates? Hearing none, we have ordinance number ninety-three-two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number ninety-three dash two thousand twenty-five. All members have the speech, practice, and evidence. I'll read by title only. An ordinance, ordinance to authorize and ratify the execution of denounce certificates by the finance director and the payment of amounts due for various purchase orders. And the final passage of ordinance number ninety-three-two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number ninety-three-two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. An ordinance number ninety-three-two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item thirteen, ordinance ninety-four, purchase of consideration for the health district. Mr. Shaw, is this you?
Actually, Leslie, why don't you go ahead for that?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. This is just a one-year amendment to the existing agreement that we have for the health department.
To, this is just in response to the proposed purchase of the Catholic Diocese property. They're going to extend the term for an additional five years to, for the energization over the, over those additional years. And actually, I believe our cost is going down a little bit based on the, what the actual cost was versus what they had anticipated, so I would recommend its approval.
So just a little more context, are you all familiar with, did, did, do we submit that to members of council? The actual document itself?
I don't know, I believe so.
Okay, so just a little more context then. If you've ever been to the Toledo, Lucas County Health Facility, it's, it's, it's headlong and useful life. Long being the operative word. So the health department has looked around and said, hey, Toledo Catholic Diocese is interested in selling their facility, which is on Spielbush, if you know where that's at. And basically to move their operations there. So as a member of the, of the board of health for the city, they've come to us and said, hey, we need some, you know, we need, need some clarification on this from all the communities, including the city of Sylvania. So give you a little more context on that. Any questions about that before we consider it?
So ultimately, this is just about them moving from their current location to the new location.
They're, they're gonna purchase the building, and, and I don't know what the old, the, the current building is gonna do, whether they're gonna knock it down or find some other purpose for it. My guess is they're not gonna find some other purpose for it, but that's, you know, not, not our affair.
Yep.
Maybe to add a little bit of context too, they've asked for all members to do this amended agreement as well. So before they go into the big purchase of this new building, they want to make sure everybody that's a member of this has extended their agreement terms.
Standing on, on the limb on, on her own, everybody else is with us on this.
You know, we're doing, we're extending our agreement so they know we're gonna be part of this. That's, yeah.
Yep. Now we kick in, so the, so the modification in our payments would kick in next year, correct, Mr. Shaw?
Correct.
Well, we still haven't even gotten to that step yet, so we have a district advisory committee meeting that we're supposed to have with them coming up to fully disclose all of the purchase price and what they're doing with that. We have not had that step yet. This is just the agreement up in front of that to make sure all the members are still on board, and then we move forward with that. I anticipate that meeting. We've tried to schedule it for September. We just haven't picked a date yet.
Questions for Ms. Brining or Mr. Shaw? Hearing none, we have ordinance ninety-four-two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number ninety-four dash twenty-twenty-five, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an amended agreement for the establishment of a regional combined health district for the administration of health and environmental services within the geographical jurisdiction of Lucas County. I move for passage of ordinance number ninety-four dash twenty-twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve ordinance number ninety-four-two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. An ordinance ninety-four-two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item fourteen, purchase, potential purchase of e-bikes for the police division chief.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our officers are currently riding seventeen-year-old mountain bikes that we purchased in two thousand and eight. And we've been looking over the past several years to upgrade to e-bikes. We just haven't quite found what we wanted. The price was always high. This year, as we were looking, we came across, we did actually look at three different companies, three different models. One is a police-only bike. That's all they do. Of course, when you put police in front of everything, it's like anything else, they jack the price up. So you're looking at, you know, roughly four thousand dollars per bike. We did look at another, like a specialized version from a local store. Again, we're still at three thousand dollars, and the colors just aren't compatible. I mean, police don't really like riding red bikes. We don't want to be confused with firemen. Nothing against them, just don't want to be confused with them. But we did check, the other place was Mountain Man on Reynolds Road. They're local. They carry Avant, Aventon bikes. And we were actually gonna be able to get into one of those for seventeen fifty per bike. So it was a drastic savings, and when we spec them out, they spec out the same as the police-only bike for four thousand dollars. So we did have the bike patrol, most of our bike patrol officers did go out and test drive the bikes to see if this is what we're looking at. And they came back with thumbs up. They liked them. This is where things are headed. A lot of the people were writing to, a lot of the, the kids that you're seeing riding around on these bikes, that they would be going after or riding these same bikes. So we're asking, I know it's, we're getting started again this year, but we would like to purchase these now in the hopes that we can get them in, get some training on it, have them out in time for some of our football games, have them out, of course, for Halloween, which are most popular, when we send them out with bags full of candy to see the kiddos. And then be ready to start next season right away with them, so.
Are they gonna be identified as Sylvania police bike?
They're gonna, they're a Cobalt Blue, and the bags on our back of the bike have police on them. And then the officers are in uniform with police on the back of their shirts.
So we, we have, we currently have six bicycles.
Yes.
And we'd be going to four.
And the reason for that is the bikes that we have have that high crossbar, like a mountain-style bike. And because of different sizes, we had to buy so many different height bikes. And the Aventon offers a step-through model, so that takes the height out of it. So there's no reason to have a small frame and an extra-large frame. I can put them all in pretty much one. They can ride them, so.
And that answers your most question. Would we be able to take the dollar off these?
They, they can be adapted to a class three. They're not supposed to be.
Five.
Like all e-bikes are adaptable.
If, if you're pursuing the same type of bike, then you're not overdoing them.
Then you know they got something better than yours.
So you're assuring us, chief, that you're not gonna pull the governors off these things so they go sixty miles an hour? Is that correct?
Even without the governor, it's only supposed to be thirty, but.
Sure.
Not buying motorcycles.
And, and chief, just, just for clarification, where's this money coming from for this particular request?
This was not in the proposed budget, but we do have, it's a law for some trust fund that any seizures go into, so we would be using money for that.
And there's sufficient funds in that, for that purpose?
To cover those purchases.
Missed out.
I always do keep an extra eye open when something's out of the budget cycle. But you can't plan for everything at the beginning of the year. You have a very specific reason for getting it now. You have a spot where the money's gonna come from. But also, I mean, e-bikes are one of those items that are on the list that are likely to get a lot more expensive pretty quickly here. So I think that's another supporting reason to do this sooner rather than later. I think it'll be nice seeing some officers go around e-bikes. I can speak to being a recent purchaser of an e-bike myself. They're a lot of fun, and hopefully they'll hopefully extend their capacity.
Did you pull the governor? So we go faster?
Mine was.
Or maybe you shouldn't tell me that.
I actually, there's a sticker I remove, and they're prepared if I want to go to the faster one.
Oh, wow.
Maybe we'll go faster.
So were those twenty-five-hour speed limits, if you see councilwoman style, running, running a little fast, you know? Other questions for the chief?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Murphy.
Length of the battery life and like distance that you can go on a charge?
Sixty miles. And your, your hours depend on how much you use the throttle to assist you, so.
Oh, I was sixty, but I, I read that.
But we would purchase, they were giving us a discount and batteries too, so we'd get two extra batteries, so we could have them ready to go.
Other questions for the chief? Hearing none, we have ordinance ninety-five-two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number ninety-five dash two thousand twenty-five, and I agree by title only, accepting the proposal of Mountain Man Ski and Bike for the purchase of four Aventon Adventure e-bikes and additional batteries, appropriating funds therefore in an amount not to exceed seven thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. I move passage of ordinance number ninety-five dash two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure.
We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number ninety-five-two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. An ordinance ninety-five-two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item fifteen, we have a vehicle for potential placement on gov deals. Chief?
Yes, the fund that we were just talking about, about seizures, this is where some of that fund would be coming from. One of our officers stopped an individual for an OVI, and it was multiple OVIs reaching the level where you could seize the vehicle. So the court did a look back, and it all depends on how many you have within a set period of time. It qualified for a seizure. It was that person's vehicle, and there was no lien against the vehicle. So the vehicle was, we accepted the seizure, and so now we are proud owners of a two thousand eleven Ford F-three-fifty that we would like to list on gov deals.
Need for a two thousand eleven Ford F-three-fifty internally?
Yeah.
Okay. About a diesel or anything?
It is a diesel.
Is it really?
Yes.
Should have some value on a gov deal if we just.
It's actually in a pretty decent shape for the age and mileage that it's on. Look at diesel. Most of the time mileage doesn't mean a lot in a diesel, so.
Any consideration for that? Any questions from council? Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval to post seized vehicle two thousand eleven Ford F-three-fifty on gov deals for auction.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve placing the Ford F-three, two thousand eleven Ford F-three-fifty on gov deals for sale. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to fifteen B, interceptors and miscellaneous.
Yes, these are city properties that we have that our new vehicles have come in. They're not in service yet. But in preparation for that, the one vehicle will be going out of service, and that is a two thousand fourteen police interceptor. So we're asking to put that on gov deals as well, to move that out. And what we've been doing, some general house cleaning, with us downsizing the bikes, getting new bikes. We have some old kind of bike racks, old bicycle bags that do not say police on them, so we can sell them. And a whole bunch of obsolete old media that was not used. Obviously, if it had been recorded on or anything, we would have destroyed them. So these were all new that were held in storage in case we needed them, and we don't use DVDs or anything like that here. We're thinking maybe while we're posting the other stuff on, we'll throw them on and see if we can sell them and recoup some money for the city.
No eight-tracks, no real, real?
VHS tapes and some cassette tapes, but, yeah, no eight-tracks. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know. I saw that. I'm, I'm gonna look that up. I'm assuming, assuming we can pass that. Any questions for members of council? Good luck with selling the VHS tapes. Hearing none, Mrs. Westfall, would you like to consider this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval to obsolete, to post obsolete equipment in two thousand fourteen police interceptor on gov deals for auction as presented in Chief Miller's August eleventh-two thousand twenty-five memo.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to authorize the city to post on gov deals various obsolete equipment per Chief Miller's August eleventh-two thousand twenty-five memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number sixteen. We have resolution fourteen-two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Ms. Brining.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annexation petition that we filed at the residence request. She lives on Acres Road and just really wanted to be a part of the city, so it's a single-owner unanimous annexation petition. So as you guys will remember, we always have to adopt escape and escape services, and you know, provide the same services for this property that we do all of the rest of the city properties. And we have to do that prior to the hearing, which is set for September sixteenth, so I'll have a great guest here.
Questions for Ms. Brining regarding resolution fourteen?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Brining, letter M on the resolution says above, we'll be providing it in six months.
Yes, we have to provide a timeline for, it's a statutory requirement that we have a timeline in there for. Obviously, and we have to wait ninety days after the annexation is granted to accept the property into the city. So it gives us a little bit of extra time just to get it into our system and all of that.
So there will, there will be a agreed-upon date? There's not like a risk of interrupted services?
Oh, no, no, not at all. Yeah, no. Once it's, once it's officially accepted into the city, then we send it, I send it to the police department. They update their CAD system. And we can, that's really the main thing that would, that would be effective, and they would get added to our refuse and recycling allowance as well. Unpartisan.
So we're gonna plow the street. So we're gonna plow the street anyway. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, and you know, the property line is all kind of over there.
I know.
Looks like a congressional district.
Any other questions for Ms. Brining? Hearing none, we have resolution fourteen-two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. Hanam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of resolution number fourteen dash twenty-five. I agree by title only, adopting the statement pursuant to revised code of Ohio seven point A D P indicating what services will be provided to the area proposed to be annexed to the city of Sylvania by petition for annexation filed with the Board of Lucas County Commissioners, and I move adoption of resolution number fourteen dash twenty-five as an emergency.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve resolution number fourteen-two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. And resolution fourteen-two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number seventeen, petition for a zoning ordinance, Z A two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Sanford, can you give us a little bit of information on this? Please, Mr. Shaw then. Okay, okay.
The map that's provided in your pack is a little zoomed out, but this would be the first property immediately south of the American Legion on Centennial Road.
Yeah.
The developer would like to do something different over here. The developer would like to do something different over here, it was annexed, brought in from Sylvania Township under a mixed zoning, that was the closest relevant zoning that could be done, our, our code doesn't currently have a mixed zone category for that, so the applicant is requesting it go to B two to do some flex space. I'm being told flex space is the best exam, I'm a visual guy, the best example would be like central and Centennial, as you go south on, on Centennial, on the east side of the road, there's basically square cutouts of buildings on a, on a particular plot, and they may have three or four suites inside of those, and you may have a glass blower next to a, a high-impact fitness gym next to something else, so I think that's the intent of the land use.
And, and, Mr. Shaw, I don't remember when, but some years ago, we city annexed this property, do you recall when that was?
Two thousand twenty-one or eighteen, Leslie, I don't remember.
Eighteen.
Okay.
A while ago.
Yes.
That's why I couldn't, I know it was. I'm pretty sure it was pre-COVID, that's where my line always is, is it pre-COVID or post-COVID? The years I remember, it was the old Denver, right?
Yes.
Mr. Sanford?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to, Joe's comments that Ms. Brining and I met with Mr. Hachnacki today to talk about the possibility of a CRA in that area in the future, and, and talk with Mike, we're going to set up a meeting with the, we've already been in contact with the school system, and we're going to have a meeting with them to see if something could be worked out with that.
Okay, good. Just out of curiosity, is that, is that permissible, Ms. Brining?
We would have the ability to create any CRA in that location, okay.
And it would be under the new terms and facilities.
Right, where we got to make a school district hall.
Right.
Correct, understood, okay.
Okay, with that, we have zoning ordinance ZA two thousand twenty-five for consideration, referral to the Planning Commission, Mr. Hanam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would we refer zoning application number one dash twenty-two-five to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation?
Second. We have a motion and a second to refer ZA, application ZA one-two thousand twenty-five to the Planning Commission for consideration and, and recommendation to council, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, and the application is referred to the Planning Commission. Moving on to gateway signing standards, you'll notice there that there's some information there for a recommendation on that, and that's just for informational purposes, we have yes, the Planning Commission Board of Architectural Review minutes as well for that, any questions about those? Hearing none, any other items, committee reports or committee referrals come before council this evening? Hearing none, we're at the end of our agenda, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, and we are adjourned until our next meeting on Tuesday, September.
Second.
The second, we'll be seeing you all in council chambers on Tuesday.
All opposed.
Thank you very much.